Item nine is an ordinance, amending ordinance 115-14. This will correctly identify line item description for line item 010-740-7913. This amendment will take out new routes at 35 South Paint and take it to unanticipated property repairs. This warning, no money involved. Also, as temporary Parks and Recreation Committee Chair, there are two items on tonight's agenda. Item two is the second reading of the ordinance to authorize the city auditor to move the municipal swimming pool department from the general fund and into the recreation fund. All funds that are now being earmarked for the pool that go into the general fund will now go into the recreation fund and remain earmarked for the pool. Item 10 is the first reading of a Parks and Recreation resolution granting use of the city park to surrounding streets, including some downtown streets, for the annual feast of the Flowery Moon. This resolution is exactly the same as last year's and except for the dates. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Trussell. Mrs. Gray.
Thank you, President Eleanor. I apologize in advance for the length of my report. The Human Resources Committee has only one item appearing on tonight's council agenda under item number one, which refers to request to appropriate $48,000 to fund the EEO Administrator for the remainder of calendar year 2015. The legislation failed to pass if we awaited personnel actions to be taken within the two county police department. The sergeant in question retired effective March 1st, and the officer that was expected to be rehired to fill the vacant position has declined the offer. To date, no plan or timeline for filling that position has been provided. I do know that testing is going to be done, and that should take place within the next two weeks. At the appropriate time, I will once again request to waive the three read rule to approve the piece of legislation, as I feel we no longer have any excuse not to complete this action. Regarding legislation request 14-168, a request for legislation to update the pay ordinance 80-12 that expired at the end of 2014, which established rates of pay and other economic benefits for nonclassified employees and classified but management level employees for the City of Chillicothe. That legislation request was sent to the Law Director's office on February 6. Regarding legislation request T-15-04, a request for legislation to adopt a part-time pay increase as negotiated in the most recent contract negotiated with Axme, a final request was sent to the Law Director's office on February 19. While I understand the recent activity concerning personnel actions and hearings may have kept the Human Resources Director quite busy, I do not understand totally why this is March already and both of these pieces of legislation still have not been completed, schedules notwithstanding. I do not fault the staff at the Law Director's office or want to specifically log the efforts of Teresa Wood in moving these requests along. Based on the fairly substantial amount of correspondence between the Law Director's office, the City Auditor's office, and the Mayor's office, I can only reiterate the critical need for the Human Resources Director to do her due diligence in assisting all departments in not only preparing the appropriate documentation pertaining to personnel actions prior to legislation requests coming to the Mayor, but also in making sure the necessary documentation accompanies those requests to the City Council committees. In reference to a couple of additional remaining items from 2014, the Human Resources Committee would like to once again request the following. A status on the reposting of the transit clerk position. It is the understanding of the committee that the posting expired on January 19th. We would like to know what are the next steps? Is there still a possibility that bumping rights may be called into question? Status on the draft of personnel policies and procedures. It is the continued feeling of the committee that the absence thereof has done more harm than good with respect to the daily operations of the city. The Human Resources Committee would like to review this draft by March 15th and request that a timeframe for finalization and implementation be included with the draft. As a part of that request, I am now requesting a financial update on the Clemens Nelson contract and where we stand on that contract, specifically how much is the bill since the last action was taken by the City Council on approving funds. In February, Mayor Iverson mentioned that the firm was reviewing the policies and procedures, and that draft would be forthcoming. Status on the job audit request. The committee was also in support of former councilman Shoma's request for a position on the following positions: Human Resources Director, EEO Administrator, as well as the Civil Service Secretary. Given the current environment, we requested that this ought to be completed and presented to the Human Resource Committee before the first meeting of City Council in March of this year. To date, neither I nor other members of the Human Resource Committee are in receipt of any such document or documents, nor has the Human Resource Committee received a plan and implementation timeline to provide the updated position descriptions for each department in the city. That concludes my report.
I have a couple of points I missed on there. Position on the EEO Administrator, the HR Director, what was the position?
Civil Service Secretary.
Civil Service Secretary.
Civil Service Secretary.
And then also, the, after the clarifications of the transit clerk and prior to Clemens Nelson status, what was the one in between there?
It was the Policies and Procedures Draft, as we talked about.
Policies and Procedures Draft, okay.
You had stated during the last HR committee meeting or the Civil Service Commission, I'm not quite sure it was during that time, that it was in the hands of Clemens Nelson.
Actually, it was in the hands of the unions. They were looking at it, they concluded on.
Other reports from committees. Mrs. Annes.
Thank you, Mr. Eleanor. Development doesn't have any items on the agenda tonight. I would like to report that I have three outstanding assignments that I have been working on. Those are assignments that I have been working with the Law Director and other department heads on, and as of yet, I have no report to make on those. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, then we'll go to reports from officials. Mayor Iverson.
Thank you, President Eleanor. First of all, I'd like to clarify a couple of questions that Mr. Trussell had on the Auditor's office concerning the city electrician. The request for fuel of, it's item number seven, for $1,100, it was admitted from the budget. That's why we're requesting the appropriation for fuel expense for the electrician. Number eight, the $1,800 to cover training is for the electrician's I M S A certification. And that's time away from the job that covers traffic expense.
Does the city electrician need that fuel now? Does that need to be passed now?
No.
Well, I wasn't going to waive it anyhow, but three reads is okay with me.
Three reads, okay. First, I'd like to welcome Seal and Joel to council.
Thank you.
Glad to see you here. Glad to see council up the whole string. Glad to be here. I received a confirmation Friday that Chillicothe has received Tree City USA registration for the 18th consecutive year. It's always an important award, and we were happy to receive it from the Arbor Day Foundation. Also, tomorrow, we have a drug community event among pastors at Open Door Church. It's called the Soma Gathering. It's 10 o'clock tomorrow at Open Door Church. Then I'll be attending a drug abuse awareness community meeting at St. Mary's on Wednesday. And the Attorney General, Mike Boyne, is sponsoring that. Agenda items with regard to item number one, I would be delighted to see this passed tonight. I think that we need to get this behind us and get some finality to this issue and fund that position for the balance of the year. Also, item number four, I'd like to see council pass the ordinance for the purchase of the body cameras. I think it's important for us to go in concert with the Sheriff's Department on body cameras. This is one of the commitments we made in our meetings with the NAACP while we met with them to try and gain some measures that would, as best we could, provide, you know, evidence and commitment to working together to keep peaceful relations in the community. And I think that chronicling interactions between police and citizens is a good way to go about doing that, makes our officers do the right thing, and it probably does the same thing for suspects. So, I'd like to see that passed tonight. That concludes my report.
Mayor Iverson?
Law Director Rutherford. Thank you, President Eleanor. The Law Director's Office recently provided training to local law enforcement agencies regarding new case law as it relates to driving under suspension, no operator's license, operating a motor vehicle in care, and in physical control cases. These training sessions provided law enforcement with the opportunity to ask questions that they might have regarding their response and procedures in light of this new case law, and it was well attended by several agencies. On a similar note, the Law Director's Office participated in a volunteer capacity with the Chillicothe Police Department Active Shooter Training, which for a lot of us took place on Friday, March 6, 2015. I think a couple of members of council also attended some of those, maybe Nancy and Mr. Tatman was with me. And I know that our school safety plan has been in question lately in the news, and I can tell you, hopefully, we won't ever have to implement any of these procedures, but I can tell you, I've got the utmost confidence in their ability to diffuse any type of a situation should that ever become necessary. So, I'm happy to report that they're very well trained. I understand Mrs. Gray's sentiment about the legislation since February 6th. That's a long time for it to be sitting in our office, and just kind of reiterate that it's been in there long enough, but we're still awaiting a piece of information or to finalize that pay ordinance for you, so hopefully, we'll have it next meeting. And that's all I have to report on. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is audience participation. Anyone who would like to address council this evening can please step to the microphone, give your name and address. And as a reminder, council rule limits each speaker to five minutes and each subject to 15. Is there anyone who would like to address council? Welcome.
My name is Portia Bolger, and I live in the county by like doing raisin chili coffee, so I have a dire interest in it. I'd just like to take a minute to thank Law Director Rutherford. Pass a word into myself, met with her last week, and it was an outstanding meeting, and I walked away with a lot of really good information. And because I have heard through the rumor mills that Portia's after Sherri Rufford, for the record, I'm not stand-up Chillicothe, it's not, she is running a tight ship. And I'm a liberal, laming Democrat. And when I walked in, I didn't know what I'd hear, but what I heard was some real good stuff. And every department in this city is being run similarly to what Sherri Rufford's doing. We would have a lot more accountability. So, thank you, Ms. Rufford. I really appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Bruce Landis. I live at 151 West Fifth, and I've been a resident probably eight years of the city and in the county for 34 years. As I've looked at the agenda tonight and seen the focus on upcoming street paving and all that kind of thing, I wanted to mention that I'm one of those strange people. I walk my dog in the area every night. And throughout the last couple of years, I have got to say that I have a real feel for people who are in the group homes, Tiffin Towers, and everywhere else where the sidewalks in this town need as much or more than the streets. And I see people coming down from Sac and Save to Tiffin Towers. I have walked myself in areas where you're walking all of a sudden, there isn't a section of sidewalk where there are tree roots that are uprooting and heaving sections of sidewalk. I know we've put a lot of money, I don't know whether it's granted or federal requirements, into the ADA access, corners, the ramps, and that kind of thing, but a lot of times, these access points don't go anywhere. There are ramps that go from the street up to nothing. Or you watch somebody with a scooter or a wheelchair that goes down, and there's a drop-off. There's an impassable barrier. And I know there has been a lot of good emphasis in this town on looking to the future, you know, the whole study that's led to the emphasis on looking at the Carlisle Building, the revitalization of the town, and so many positive things. And I really think that at some point in time, the council and this city, we should concentrate on the very lowest level of transportation that we have, because that is really in dire streets, and it is one of the things that goes right along with the appearance of our town, what people look at when they come and see that. And I hope we can work on a sidewalk ordinance or something like that to really get us to the point where we can be proud of this town in that particular area. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Could I address Mr. Landis?
Yes.
Mr. Landis, one thing I do need to tell you, it is odd that you see a wheelchair ramp going nowhere, but the rule with ODOT is if you make road repairs and there's no ramp there, one has to be put in. So, even, I know there's one over by Pilot that it goes into the grass, but because they worked on the road there, they had to put it in.
Right. I would love to see a sidewalk ordinance where maintenance is actually made an emphasis for the entire city on that. And I understand the regulations sometimes seem strange.
Thank you again.
My name's Alan Davis. I live at 370 Braywood. I decided to come to speak after I had read the articles in the Gazette, which I appreciate their emphasis on the five key things to make us successful in the future as a city. But the one that was, to me, very obviously missing was no discussion about how we would address our streets on an ongoing basis. So, I put together a little piece that I've handed out, and I start off with a question, does the city have a plan for maintaining streets? To me, that's a rhetorical question, and the answer is no. What I'm aware of, and I may not be aware of everything the city has, but I've tried to stay up on the street part, is the city, the engineering department did a good assessment of the street segments back in 2013, but I think we all realize that that assessment's out of date dramatically, especially on the ratings that they would have given those streets. The other thing that I was aware of, or what I saw the city came up with, was how would we spend $1.4 million a year if the levy passed? But that's much different than what is required to bring our streets up to standard and maintain them on an ongoing basis. So, in line with what the prior speaker said, I define streets, and I put it in here in quotes, because it's really streets, highways, alleys, curbs, and sidewalks are all a part of maintaining streets. I put in some thoughts on a street plan, because it really, there are two parts to it. What do we need to do to bring them back up to standard? And then what's an ongoing plan? And I even put some examples down there. The city has 12 million square feet that they're responsible for paving, so if we're going to do, reset, pave a street every 15 years, engineers said an average life of a street is 15 years, that means we've got to be paving 800,000 square feet of streets every single year. We can't miss one year. We can't say one year, we're only going to do 300,000. We've done, since 2003, we've paved 3% of our streets, of the city responsible streets. The city has reached out and used ODOT money wherever they could, so we've seen more paving than that done within the city. Annual crack sealing, the city engineers stressed the importance of annual crack sealing and how that allows us to extend the life of the streets, maybe even to 20 years. Since 2003, we've crack sealed 3% of our streets, and there's 87% of our city streets that have not been crack sealed since 1994. There's 60% of our city streets that have not been paved from, since 1994, that's of the ones the city's responsible for. That's 20 years, and 20 years is pushing the extent of what you can expect a street to last. So, that means 60% of our streets really need to be addressed right now, this year. Obviously, we don't have the money. So, I put in some other things on the backside. I put in the stats that I developed from the summary of that engineering study. It's not going to be totally up to date, because we've had some ODOT paving since then, so that column, but that, that's the numbers from that particular deal. So, on that, you'll see in the, in this big block, in the column that says city, we have 7.2 million square feet of streets that have not been paved since 1994. If it's at $2 a square foot, which is probably on the low side, that's over $14 million. That's more than what the levy is going to bring in and be allocated to paving over the next 10 years, and that's, those streets haven't been paved since 1994. So, I really think, to be serious about our future, we need to develop a more complete plan on our city streets. How are we going to bring them up to standard? And then how are we going to maintain them on an every-year basis? The problem is, the numbers are going to be astronomical. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Can I comment on that? Mr. Davis's points are certainly well-taken and certainly true. One thing that I'd like to point out, though, is we did our street plan last year in preparation for the levy presentations that we did last fall. So, it has been updated as of last summer, 2014. We went to a three-year plan, because anything outside of that, the winters, the snow plowing, the, just the knocks and bruises on the streets with the snow plowing, with the fong and the freezing, pay a huge price that's undeterminable. You can't predict what streets are going to especially be hard hit by a fong and freezing and cracking and whatnot. But Mr. Davis's point on crack sealing is very true. Here we had paint street just resurfaced by ODOT the year before last, and if you look on the streets between Second Street and Water Street, the amount of cracks, I just noticed that today driving down there, the amount of cracks on that street, freshly paved street, are unbelievable, and those need to be crack sealed and repaired. So, we do have a big mission in front of us. The levy, the problem issue is for temporary road construction program for 10 years. That'll get the job about half done, so, in current dollars. I know you're shaking your head.
No.
It's, that's what we predicted from. And in the square footage that we do, that does not include the major thorough repairs that ODOT's responsible for.
Right.
That's just our responsibility of that. So, Alan, if you want to come in and we can throw the numbers around some more in preparation for this valid issue, I may, you're more than welcome in my office. I appreciate it, Mark.
Is there anyone else that wishes to address council this evening?
Hi, my name is Angie Triga, I'm the secretary for Feast of the Flowery Moon Committee. And once again, it's time for the feast coming up the end of May, and Tom and I have item number 10, the resolution on there. I'm just here tonight to answer any questions that you might have, again, and there's some new messages on council and that, so, as always, if anybody has any questions, we're open to those. Kristen right over here, if you would like to question, you know, ask after council meeting or whatever, or now, anything we can answer for you. There's no changes again this year in the closings from Wednesday evening to Monday. That's, everything is still the same as it's been many years in the past, so, just wanted to be here tonight and represent the feast, and thank you for having us every year. We appreciate it.
My name is Karen Williams. I live at 371 Claywood Lane, a proud resident and worker in the first ward. I do want to take a moment to echo Ms. Bolger's comments to Law Director Rutherford. Law Director Rutherford has an inordinate and busy schedule, of course, you know all the work that her office does. She and one of her assistant law directors took a couple of hours out of their busy schedule, squeezed us in, to let us come in and ask questions, just to sit down and have conversations with members of the public. Law Director Rutherford, after that interaction, I am absolutely positive that your office is the best-run office in the city. Law Director Rutherford was able to produce any document we asked for on the spot. She was able to give us an idea of how her employees allocate comp time, what her employee's schedule looks like by an hourly timesheet. It was quite remarkable to see that, that kind of accountability from her office. I also want to take time to express my appreciation to my counselor, Mr. Trussell. Mr. Trussell, you mentioned at the last council meeting that you have a particular position on the EEO issue, particularly that you've stated that you're going to oppose EEO funding in the 2016 budget. And I appreciate you taking that position openly. I've always appreciated knowing where I stand with you. I do disagree with you on that issue, and I want you to understand that EEO funding, not just for 2015, but for 2016, 2017, 2018, and ongoing in the city, is a priority for me, and it's a priority for the organization to which I belong. And we will be advocating for that funding in the 2016 budget. We will be advocating against your position. I understand why you take that position. I understand the fiscal situation we're in, but that's a priority that I hope you will eventually be able to see and be able to support and fund in this place. I'm here tonight to speak to a little bit of a frustration that I have around the way that our organization has been received here at council. It seems that we come to council advocating for the past four months, particularly for the EEO position. We will advocate, of course, for other things, but this in particular, we have advocated for, and we've done so in a very forthright way, telling you what our position is and making sure that you understand continually the position that we take as members of the City of Chillicothe. And Mrs. Patrick, I was very surprised last council session to see you stand in opposition to EEO funding. You stated that you would support the resolution once it came, but you didn't want to do it too quickly. You stated that you didn't want to put EEO ahead of the firefighter and police issue, which was interesting to me, because I was here in this room when you voted against fire and against police, when you voted against the levy. Now firefighters and police officers understand where you stand in regard to their bottom line. They understand you don't stand with them, and standing against EEO is not going to show them that you stand with them, because EEO is a service provided to them. Voting against the service provided by fire and police can't support them. But then, after the last meeting, I come in contact with an email where it's very clear that you're interacting with a person from outside our community in regard to our organization, in regard to stand-up Chillicothe. Now, Mr. Steve Reeves communicated with you, and communicated quite a few of his dealings. And you didn't just respond to him and say, yes, I received your email, I received your contact. You actually responded with him and concurred in a particular statement. You made the statement that one of his line items was particularly true. The statement that you agreed with is the following. This statement was made by Mr. Reeves and concurred with by Mrs. Patrick. "They," referring to stand-up Chillicothe, "they have been successful in pressuring local officials, and a failure to stop or even oppose this group will only embolden their future efforts." Mrs. Patrick, I want to tell you publicly in this place that the only thing that could embolden us as an organization more than success is failure. The only thing that could embolden us more than you ignoring us, as you have quite a lot here in the last couple of weeks, obviously by your vote you have, the only thing that can embolden us more is this kind of chicanery, interacting with outside political operatives. I don't know who this man is, but his name doesn't appear on our voter roll in Ross County. I don't know what your interest is with him in particular, but concurring with this person about a group that is only interested in voicing public opinion, only interested in bringing voters to you to let them connect with you and let you know what their positions are, that seems pretty poor. I hope, in this place, we can put the EEO issue to rest for 2015, but let's remember, this is not the end of the game. We're not at halftime. We're barely into the first quarter, because our organization is going to be in this for the long haul. We're not from outside the county. We're not from outside this community. We're invested in this community. We work and live in this community, and we want you to support equal opportunity and fair housing in this community now, next year, and years after. We will continue our advocacy regardless of whether you won't stop or oppose us. We will continue our advocacy regardless of what you try to do. We will continue our advocacy regardless of what you try to do to oppose us. And we will continue speaking truth as we stand up for underprivileged persons and against undeniable prejudice in this community. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening? Seeing none, we'll close that portion of our agenda and we'll move to old business. Mrs. Gray.
Thank you, President Eleanor. This is my third request this calendar year for a special committee assignment for implementation of the strategic planning process specifically geared to city council and its meetings. I started making requests dating back to June of 2013, and I made such a request at both January 12th and January 26th for regular city council meetings. I am sure there are those of you, especially those of us that are part of this type of process, who are probably wondering why I'm strongly encouraging this action. But a strategic plan provides for accountability and additional transparency, transparency for government bodies. It is a specific roadmap of where the city is going and how it plans to get there while determining measurable results. Our lack of planning, I believe, has contributed to the lack of direction and focus displayed by Chillicothe City Council for a number of years. For those who have not been involved with strategic planning, let me say from experience that there is a direct correlation between the lack thereof and continued persistent budget woes. To that end, I have provided a copy to each member of city council of the strategic plan for the City of Westerville, along with a strategic plan year-end review report, as well as a 10-step guide to strategic planning for year review. And I didn't have enough to pass out of the year-end, but I did pass out the strategic plan as well as the 10-step process. It is my hope that before the end of March, we can get the process moving and get a plan in place before June of this year. Thank you, President Eleanor.
Thank you, Mrs. Gray. Other old business? Mrs. Patrick.
Just like to announce that the Nuisance Abatement Board is meeting 2:30 tomorrow afternoon across the street in the municipal council chambers. So, snow is melting, the nuisances are growing.
Thank you. Other old business? All right, we'll move on to petitions and correspondence received by Mr. Paulson.
The only thing I've received, President Eleanor, is, in February, I actually received this, it's dated January 26th. It's a letter from Chestnut Commons, a senior living community, in reference to a development that they have proposed for the City of Chillicothe at 425 Chestnut Street. It's 40 units total. And although it says you have the right to submit comments within 30 days of the notice, I'm sure that you would accept and appreciate that any member of council has any comments on it. But I passed that out to the members of council. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Is there new business this evening? Mrs. Gray.
I just had a couple of questions with regard to tonight's agenda, and I'm not sure if I'm asking at the right time. But in reference to the three items, item number four, five, and six, whether or not there was any meeting? I know that with regard to the grant, that's something that happens every year, but I know the body cameras is a little bit something new. And whether or not there was any meeting to discuss the three items, part of being brought forward tonight for our vote?
I did not call a meeting because we are accepting money. And the only reason why we would have a meeting is whether or not we would accept that money or not. So I pulled them together because we accepted money on all three of them. None of it came out of the general fund. They were from organizations and grants, things like that.
That question was just asked, and so I just wanted to make sure that we're right on that. Thank you.
I want to piggyback on what Alicia just asked. Tom, I understand, since we are just accepting money, but I do have an issue on the body cameras. I support the idea of having the body cameras. I think those could be a great resource. But my concern here is that, not knowing how these things operate, are there any fees that are going to be hidden and that we're going to be hit with next year? Because there's going to be, we're going to need to have storage for these, you know, any type of media they collect is going to have to be stored. Software updates, what, what can we expect for costs? Because there's surely going to be updates over time. Just a few questions about that before we jump in with the fee.
We don't have to waive any of this. We don't have to accept this now.
Well, I just, you know, that's, most of it, I think, is fine. I just, I just, you know, wanted to make sure before we, we accepted it, that we weren't hit with a bill later.
Did you receive anything in safety with regard to body cameras?
No.
Okay, did you receive anything in safety for the police department radio upgrade from Sprint?
No.
Okay, there was $44 that we received from the Ross County Seniors and Law Enforcement Together. I'm sure there was, the initial legislation went through your, your committee.
For, the original marks would have gone through my committee, but I haven't had any items come through for a while.
Well, that was approved. I called you about this information, this situation, because I had a sheriff's deputy come in and ask me where that money was.
Oh, okay.
Had it already been appropriated.
Yeah.
This assaults a part of that.
Oh, the assault part, yeah, that's fine, yeah.
That's where that came from.
Yeah, that's, I have no issue with that at all.
So I will ask to waive item six, and I will not waive item four and five, and we will have a committee meeting on three, four, five, seven, eight, nine, and I have two other items that we can meet on.
Thank you, Tom.
With regard to item four, if I can just jump in here, I don't even know if they've settled in on using the same radios as the sheriff's department or another one. I, I would suggest that we approve receiving the money and then call meetings to discuss the programs and put your concerns to rest in that, that meeting.
This only accepts the money, it doesn't appropriate it.
Right. Well, it's, it's, it's appropriate, but it's all three of them.
All three of them, except for appropriate.
I don't think we have a better to appropriate, especially for the body cameras exactly yet. I think there's an idea of what we want to do, but I think that a meeting's warranted to get everybody, you know, especially ask for your expertise on software and, and that kind of thing does something.
Okay, thanks.
So if we want to go ahead and accept the money, so we can get that moving, I can get a meeting with Captain Washburn.
Well, let's get Captain Washburn to the meeting and the auditor to get everyone there so we can ask these questions and get them done right now. I'd like to do this Wednesday, but I don't know, haven't been here yet. I don't know if the first floor conference room is available, and I don't know if transit's available. So I will email everyone if I can, like, email for work and let everyone know about that. But right now...
The conferences should be available Wednesday because the planning commission was canceled.
Cross-straits, yeah, they're moving. All right. I was 3:00 soon, I apologize.
Fantastic.
3:00 Wednesday, first floor conference room for...
Can we move to 3:30, Tom?
I can do this.
Okay, thanks.
3:30, first floor conference room.
Is there any new business for the boardroom? Mrs. Ames.
Hold on, hold on one sec. I'll put you on my calendar. Okay. I have several things, words of thanks that I would like to express to things that have happened this past week. First of all, I want to thank Detective Gannon for conducting the active shooter training. I went to the Wednesday class. It was incredibly eye-opening. The first part of the class, they had videos and in-classroom training, and then the second part, we went over to the old Western School and did actual drills. And just watching them, what they do, I actually participated in one, and then after that, I said, "I'll just watch," because it made me nervous, it made me nervous to do it. But they, how to find somebody if there's a shooter in the building, how to keep the stairways safe, it was just, it was, it was very interesting. I appreciate that Detective Gannon is conducting the class.
Is that Gannon? I'm sorry, I can't.
Gannon, Gannon, I'm in. Secondly, the city crew departments, I posted on Facebook, I said, "I was coming home from church yesterday, they were cleaning up the snow." I've had people say, "Why do they wait?" It's easier for them to do it on weekends, especially on Sundays, when there aren't cars downtown, because if there are cars in the parking places, you can't really get to the snow. So they had the backhoe, and they had the trucks, and they were just scooping all over town and taking it down to the park. So I really appreciate the crews getting, they got a lot of snow out yesterday. On Saturday, at the Kiwanis Statehood Day, there was a prayer request at Trinity, and Bill Beatty was honored as the Kiwanis Statehood Day Award winner of the year. He's been very active in the community, and it's an honor well-deserved. We had former Ohio Senator Whip Nina Turner and Reverend Hocker were the two speakers, and they did, it was just very, you left there with a really good feeling, good spirit for the whole day. It was really, really nice. And finally, Dr. Blake Lloyd and the staff of North Fork Animal Clinic and Perfect Companions Pet Adoption Center and Petland, they had a neuter pelusa at North Fork Village. And I was there until 1:00, and by then, they had fixed 120 male cats. So those are 120 male cats that will not be adding to the overpopulation problem. And this is the first event of its kind held by a veterinarian in our community. And though it's not a solution, it certainly will make an impact on the community. And they, they were overwhelmed. They were supposed to start at 11:00. By 9:30, the whole lobby was filled, and the place was just packed all afternoon. And they were extremely accommodating, polite people, and the, the people that were there were very appreciative. They did the, the fixing the cats for $20, which is much, much less than if you took your cat to a vet and did it privately. So I want to thank everybody who was involved in that. It was a great service to the community. That ends my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Ames. Other new business? Then that brings us to committee assignments and meeting dates. We have heard from Mr. Truttle about his finance meeting. Are there other meetings we need to announce? Yes, Mrs. Patrick.
I need to have a utilities committee meeting. Can we do it 2:30 on Wednesday? Could that work for you? And then, we've got that one about the loop of an 8-inch waterline for Central Center.
I have a CDC meeting from 1:30 to 3:00, so I can meet at 2:30.
I'll just wait, we scheduled that.
All right. Anything else? You all received a list of current assignments from me this evening. Members of the audience also did, and I have additional copies if there are additional audience members who would like to have a list of your current assignments that we've been giving this evening. Those of you that are committee chairs have these items in hard copy in front of you this evening. Okay, that brings us to legislation.
Item one. Second reading of an ordinance appropriating the amount of $48,000 to fund the EEO administrator position for the remainder of calendar year 2015 and declaring emergency. Second reading.
Mrs. Gray.
Thank you, President Eleanor. I would like to respectfully request to waive the three-read rule at this point.
Motion is made to waive the three-read. Is there a second? Second, fine, Mr. Florima. All right. We'll have a roll call on the motion to waive the three-read rule.
Truttle, yes. Tatman, yes. Pearl, yes. Patrick?
No.
Neal?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Florima, yes. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes. The motion has passed to waive the three-read, and we'll have roll call on the ordinance.
Truttle, yes. Tatman, yes. Pearl, yes. Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Florima, yes. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes. And the ordinance has passed.
Second reading of an ordinance authorizing the city auditor to move the municipal swimming pool department from the general fund to the recreation fund and directing that all amounts currently appropriated in said department be transferred to the new recreation fund, municipal swimming pool department. Second reading.
Next item.
First reading of an ordinance appropriating $20,000 from the law enforcement trust fund to be used by the Chillicothe Police Department and declaring emergency. First reading.
Next item.
First reading of an ordinance accepting and appropriating $16,259 in funds received from the U.S. Department of Justice Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program for the purchase of body cameras for the Chillicothe Police Department and declaring emergency. First reading.
Item five.
First reading of an ordinance accepting and appropriating $6,550 received as reimbursement from Sprint for Chillicothe Police Department radio upgrades and declaring emergency. First reading.
Item six.
First reading of an ordinance accepting and appropriating $444 received from the Ross County Seniors and Law Enforcement Together Council as their cost share for the Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program and declaring emergency. First reading.
Mr. Truttle.
Motion, waive the three-read rule.
Sent by Mrs. Gray. Roll call on the motion to waive the three-read.
Truttle, yes. Tatman, yes. Pearl, yes. Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Florima, yes. Count, Corcoran?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes. And the motion has passed to waive the three-read rule. Let's have roll call on the ordinance, please.
Truttle, yes. Tatman, yes. Pearl?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Florima?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes. And the ordinance has passed. Item number seven.
First reading of an ordinance appropriating $1,100 to cover fuel expenses for the city electrician for calendar year 2015 and declaring emergency. First reading.
Item number eight.
First reading of an ordinance appropriating $1,800 to cover training and travel expenses for the new city electrician and declaring emergency. First reading.
Item nine.
First reading of an ordinance amending ordinance number 115-14 relating to appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city during fiscal year 2015 and declaring emergency. First reading.
And item 10.
First reading of a resolution granting use of the city park and surrounding streets from Wednesday, May 20th, 2015, at 5:30 p.m. through Monday, May 25th, 2015, at 12:00 p.m. for preparation and operation of the annual feast of the flowering moon and providing for coordination of its events with the city parks and recreation department and declaring emergency. First reading.
That completes legislation for this evening. Having no other business, do we have a motion to adjourn? Mrs. Gray. Second, Mr. Florima. We have roll call on the motion to adjourn.
Truttle, yes. Tatman, yes. Pearl, yes.